All right, good evening, everyone. The six o'clock kind of snuck up on us, but we're going to get started on time. So my name is Zach Schreink. I'm the mayor of the city of Temecula and be calling tonight's regular council meeting to order tonight at 6:00 PM. We will go ahead and start with the invocation, so I'd like to welcome up Sylvester Scott of Bahia of Temecula, please. And then I guess I'll go ahead and lead the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
Oh, thou forgiving God, these servants are turning to thy kingdom and seeking thy grace and bounty. O God, make their hearts good and pure in order that they may become worthy of thy love. Purify and sanctify the spirits, that the light of the sun of reality may shine upon them. Purify and sanctify the eyes, that they may perceive thy light. Purify and sanctify the ears, in order that they may hear the call of thy kingdom. O Lord, verily, we are weak, but thou art mighty. Verily, we are poor, but thou art rich. We are seekers, and thou art the one sought. O Lord, have compassion upon us and forgive us. Bestow upon us such capacity and receptiveness, that we may be worthy of thy favors and become attracted to thy kingdom, that we may drink deep of the water of life, may be enkindled by the fire of thy love, and be resuscitated through the breaths of the Holy Spirit in this radiant century. O God, my God, cast upon us the gathering of the glances of thy loving kindness. Keep safe each and all in thy custody and under thy protection. Send down upon these souls thy heavenly blessings. Immerse them in the ocean of thy mercy, and quicken them through the breaths of the Holy Spirit. O Lord, bestow thy gracious and aid and confirmation upon this just government. This country lieth beneath the sheltering shadow of thy protection, and this people is in thy service. O Lord, confer upon them thy heavenly bounty, and render the outpourings of thy grace and favor copious and abundant. Suffer this esteemed nation to be held in honor, and enable it to be admitted into thy kingdom. Thou art the powerful, the omnipotent, the merciful, and thou art the generous, the beneficent, the Lord of grace abounding.
Thank you. Could you all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Madam Clerk, may we please have the roll call.
Yes, Councilmember Alexander.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Calvis.
Here.
Mayor Schrank.
Here.
Mayor Potem Stewart.
Here.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move right into our Board and Commission reports, and tonight we're going to go ahead and start with the Planning Commission. Chair Charlie Trejo, welcome.
Hello, good to be here tonight. And our last meeting was on June 7th. And just to really, to tell what we do, the Planning Commission serves as a designated statutory planning agency for the city of Temecula. And we talk about subdivisions, specific plans, zone changes, plot plans, and conduct legally required public hearings. And we have five of us on the commission. My vice chair is Bob Hagel, and Gary Watts, Adam Ruiz, and Fernando Solis. So at our last meeting, next slide, please. Well, actually, this was at the city council meeting, and this was something that was updated of the purpose of the Planning Commission, and I wanted this to be included tonight, just again, being specific about what we do on the Planning Commission. We meet on the first and third Wednesdays at 6:00 PM right here. And for the purpose of state planning law, the Planning Commission serves as a planning agency. We advise the city council on planning and land use matters, which I think is pretty important. We also review and make recommendations on developments, subdivisions, and zone changes that have been proposed. We hold public hearings, we have public input on planning and land use issues, and we make recommendations on the city's general plan. We also ensure that development projects comply with the city's zoning and land use regulations, and that's a very big deal. We work with developers, architects, and other stakeholders, and we also make recommendations on environmental document-related development projects such as EIRs, enforcing the city's zoning and land use regulations, including issuing land use permits. So we do a lot. Next slide, please. So at our last meeting, we had a presentation on the capital improvement program, and whether it was consistent with the general plan. And so we discussed these projects in detail, really, a lot of them, and we had 14 public speakers on one particular item. And that item was the widening of Inez Road Phase Two from Santiago to Deportola. And so there were some concerned speakers from Los Fronteros concerning that project. That project is in the future, it's not even funded yet, so, but they wanted to make their voice heard, and they did, and it was, it was a great meeting. Our next scheduled meeting will be on July 19th, so we'll, we'll be meeting for about a month. So thank you. Any questions?
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, we'll move over to the ready commission with Chair Steen.
Good evening. There's seven commissioners in our commission, and the, the purpose of the Race Equity Diversity and Inclusion Commission is that we review and make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within the city events, services programs, policies, and enhanced community relations. We too had our last meeting on June 7th last week, and we had a presentation from Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Jennifer O'Farrell, who is the Chief External Affairs Officer of the Orange County and Inland Empire chapters, and she gives a great overview of the mentorship of the group, and also with their efforts to engage with youths, volunteers, families, including those of the LGBTQ community, which was very appropriate for our night that time. So next, so next, the ready commission, we had our Pride proclamation, which we did give to four public high schools last week. We had a room full of people in support of the Pride proclamation, we had students, we had parents, and community members. We started off with an educational video on Pride Month, we had comments from Mayor Zach Schreink, thank you for being there, and also comments from Supervisor Chuck Washington. We did a reading and a presentation of the proclamation, and also provided statistics and history in regards to why Pride Month exists. We had presentations from student club members from Chaparral, Great Oak, Rancho Vista, and Temecula Valley High Schools. And then we also had a presentation by community services regarding the events in the city during the month of June. Next slide. And our next commission meeting is going to be on August 10th, here in the council chambers at 6:00 PM, and all are welcome. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Any questions for Chair Steen? All right, we'll move on to Traffic Safety Commission with Chair Carter. Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members. Our last meeting was on May 25th. The Traffic Safety Commission consists of five commissioners. The vice chair is David Maddox, then we have Commissioners Zacharman, Richardson, and Sullivan. And the purpose of the Traffic Safety Commission, re-review recommendations on topics related to speed zones, stop signs, signals, pavement markings, and traffic design and engineering. At our meeting on the 25th, after a presentation by staff, we recommended that at Wolf Creek Drive North and Redwood Road in Alpine Place, after this stop analysis, we recommend to the city council to approve establishing multiway stop controls at the intersection of Wolf Creek Drive North and Redwood Road in Alpine Place. Also, we've, the commission approved the recommendation, or recommended staff stripe the pedestrian crosswalks at Wolf Creek North, Redwood, and Alpine, in conjunction with that, the signs. Next slide. The next was Rustic Glen Traffic Calming. After a presentation on that, we approved that the installation of VCOM advisory signs be put up there and just monitor it for the next step if this does not work. Other than that, that was it.
All right. Any questions for Chair Carter? All right, we appreciate you all being here. Thank you. Okay, we'll move into our Public Safety Report this evening to the Riverside County Sheriff's Department. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and Executive Team. For Temecula Sheriff, calls for service here to date is of 5:31:23. We had 32,095. In 2022, we had 32,880. For the month of May 2023, we had 6,702 calls. As of last year, we had, 2022, we had 6,973 calls, just a slight increase. That is all I have for this section. Any questions?
Okay. Any questions? All right, thank you for the report, appreciate you being here. Okay, we'll move into public comments on non-agenda items. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
We do, Mr. Mayor. We have public comments on non-agendized items. We also receive two or three public comments via writing on non-agendized items. As a reminder, we do not read emails into the record, we now only include them in the final record. And then, so for the in-person comments, we have, the first speaker is Frederick Ball, to be followed by Joy G. Each speaker has three minutes, and the rules are listed on the agenda. So Frederick Ball.
Welcome.
Good evening, sorry, not morning. Good evening. My name is Frederick Ball, and I am a resident of Temecula. I've been here for almost 20 years. During this time, I have been one of the many thousands that commute to San Diego for work. I'm fortunate enough to leave early most days to avoid traffic, except for recently, when I left San Diego at 1:30 PM, and it took me two hours to get home, when it normally takes one. That whole second hour was just trying to get from the border checkpoint to the Winchester exit, one hour, three exits, 11 miles. As I was sitting there, trying not to lose my mind, I got to thinking, with so many of us stuck in traffic daily, or struggling to find affordable housing in this area, or finding ways to help our unhoused residents, why is Councilmember Jessica Alexander so worried about what the plus in LGBT+ in high school clubs is, as she alluded to in a recent meeting? According to the council's website, you are a nonpartisan board elected by district from the citizens of Temecula. The council makes all policy decisions and adopts laws for the city of Temecula. So Councilmember Alexander is out of line in this questioning, and I hope you do not give it any merit or credence. I think you have other, more important city issues to discuss in these chambers. That is what the school board is for, but that's a whole other issue altogether. It's not an issue for the city council to condone or not condone, using your words, Ms. Alexander, that is the parent's responsibility to know what their child is up to, not the city. And isn't that the mantra of all the radical extremists we keep hearing from in recent months, in terms of our school's curriculum? This questioning or speculation is dangerous, and people can get hurt. There is a clear agenda you have, Ms. Alexander, and it is far from partisan. As I observed at a recent ready meeting, and there's a few of you in the room that were here last week, when people disgustingly speculated that the plus includes bestiality, grooming, and incest, another fear-mongering tactic of radical extremists. I ask you, Ms. Alexander, why do you continue to demonize an already marginalized community? History has shown that this dangerous line of questioning and accusations can lead to hate crimes, like we have seen in other communities over the years. You are stoking fear and ignorance with this line of questioning, but that is not your role on the council, and I hope your colleagues feel the same way. The plus in LGBT+ is not nefarious or evil. If young people find peers that welcome them, peers that welcome them, make them feel whole and loved, and keep some from committing suicide or turning to drugs or alcohol, isn't that a good thing? Isn't that pro-life? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Joy G., to be followed by John Moore.
Welcome.
I don't want, want, want to be here today. Um, and I likely won't be able to say everything I have prepared. Um, I, I, I went to the ready commission, and, and found myself extremely disturbed and, and, and painfully triggered by some of the things that, that, that were said. Um, I can't find this, I'm just gonna try, 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 do my best, I'm sorry. Things that you say, that you think are empowering a particular sect, believers. You talk about grooming, and indoctrinating, and, 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 and pedophilia. You're disgusting when you make such statements. I've been out for more than two decades, and I have been the recipient of so-called Christians telling me, suggesting that some of the same terminology you're using, some agenda. I have no idea, I'm 52, no idea what this agenda you speak of, yet you perpetuate it so fearfully, and you have people jumping on. My life has been threatened. I want you to know that the person who molested me as a little girl was a straight man. He's a pastor now. He's a racist, he's racist terms, he's married to a black woman. Now, the man who raped me in my twenties was a straight white man. No one, no one in this community feels a sense of love or welcoming towards what you are suggesting this plus sign stands for. What you are participating in is impacting the safety of lives. My, 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 my life is threatened, and I don't feel safe here because of things that you are saying and perpetuating.
Your time's up, thank you.
The next speaker is John Moore, to be followed by Savannah Seja.
Love yourselves more than you hate us.
Next speaker.
John Moore, to be followed by Savannah Seja.
Thank you. Good evening, city council members, mayor, executive council. Thank you for having me here this evening. I'm a little bit touched by the previous speaker, so I have to rest for a second here. Anyways, my wife and I have lived here in Temecula for the last 17 years, and we like living in Temecula. It's a really nice place, and we appreciate the fact that we live in a very nice place. And we want to thank you for all the efforts that you provide to us in the work that you do. With that, excuse me, where we live is a nice community, and as I stated, we enjoy living there. Where we live is across from Temecula Valley High School, and over the past year, we've had high school students parking on our street. And that has been pretty difficult to put up with over the past year. We've been very patient about it, us and our neighbors, and quite frankly, those of us that I have spoken with are, are pretty well over that now, if I may. So what we'd like to do is have no parking signs, if we could, placed on our street as well. We have five streets in our neighborhood, three of them are already designated as no parking signs, I assume because of the position and the situation that we've encountered this year. Unfortunately, where we live, we're a target for parking by the high schoolers, understandably. But what we'd like to see is the no parking signs put in there to eliminate any more parking up in our neighborhood. The school has parking, ample parking for people. The high schoolers should be using that, and I would recommend that they do. However, by putting no parking signs up in our, in our neighborhood, what that's going to do is turn our neighborhood into a complete no parking zone. It, in effect, takes care of one issue, but causes another. And so what I want to do is try to address the other issue, and I'll try to be, move along as quickly as I can here. What I did was to try to address the other issue is come up with a way to work with both of these issues. The first issue is pretty self-explanatory. If you put up, you put up no parking signs, that takes care of that issue, but it causes this other issue, and what I wanted to do was address that. What I did, I went onto the internet, and I found a, a sign company that produces regulatory signs, and I found a part on the website where you can take signs and you can make them up any way you need to, you can adjust them for your own particular purpose, and I'd like to share the sign that I came up with.
John, your time's up. You can hand it to the city clerk, and then...
Was that five minutes?
It's three minutes.
Oh, three? Oh, I'm sorry.
Three minutes, yes, three minutes on non-agenda items.
Okay, I'm sorry about that.
Mr. City Manager, if we could follow up with the speaker, please.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I hope you appreciate where I was going with this. Thank you.
Definitely, thank you. And then next speaker, final speaker.
The next speaker is Savannah Seja.
Thank you. Hello. Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Savannah Seja from Western Eagle Foundation, and I am here tonight to express our sincerest gratitude for your unwavering support in granting us $50,000 from the community service funding reinvestment in Temecula. Thanks to your generous assistance, we are able to help individuals and families in Temecula who are in need. Every month, an average of 554 Temecula citizens take advantage of Western Eagle Discount Food Store and customized food boxes. These boxes contain staples of canned and dry goods, proteins, fruits, vegetables, and breads. The fruits and vegetables are donated weekly while the grant, grant funds allow us to purchase boxes of staples, staples of canned and dry, dry goods for our store. My grandfather, who founded Western Eagle back in 1930, excuse me, in 1990, would be so proud, and we are exceedingly grateful for your aid in helping us care for the well-being of military veterans, seniors, children, and families by providing for their tables, cupboards, and meeting the needs of more than 6,648 citizens annually. One mother states to us that without the store and without the food box, she could not make ends meet, and everything has gone up in price, and I have four children to feed. Your support has helped us provide and many other families with much-needed food and peace of mind. As a community, we have an obligation to uplift and support one another, especially during these trying times. Your investment in Western Eagle Foundation has not only helped us carry out our mission of helping families, but has also helped strengthen our fabric of our community. Because of your support, we are making a difference in the lives of many individuals in Temecula. Thank you once again for your unwavering support and dedication to the well-being of our community. We are honored to have your support, and we look forward to continue to work with you to make our community a better place. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Judy Farnetti, Farnetti. And after Judy is David Wilson.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. My name is Judy Farnetti. I am a Temecula Valley resident, mother of three, and a grandmother of two public-educated children in this community. My, I'm also the mother of a gay son, and my heart breaks when I hear stories like Joy's. I hope it had as much impact on you as it did on me. Today, I commend the ready commission for their proclamation of support of Pride Month, along with their comments post-agenda that were emotional, supportive, and heartfelt. I also honored, also honored were exceptional GSA students from local high schools. I would like to give special thanks to Jaden Leges and Jack Bounte from Chaparral High School for their historical account honoring the origins of Pride Month. I've summarized their words here, they were kind enough to share them. Pride Month honors the anniversary of the Stonewall riots of June 1969, one of many protests with police brutality and harassment towards LGBTQ communities, especially against queer people of color. Stonewall Inn, a gay bar in New York, was a hub for the outcasts of the queer community. Many were black and brown, and those who had no other place to go. At 1:20 AM, those suspected of cross-dressing were arrested and brought outside. Additional patrons led a crowd that grew into a massive street demonstration. That was the turning point for gay and trans liberation and power. I support the human rights begun by those at Stonewall and the activists in the years since. I remind those in leadership positions and the community that words matter. Trauma experienced through bigotry and discrimination is lifelong. The words spoken at school board meetings, on social media, by parents, and other halls of government can do real harm. Pedophilia and bestiality have falsely been attributed to the plus in LGBTQ+, as been discussed earlier. With the controversy at Temecula Valley Unified School District, we now have the attention of our governor. I quote, "California is closely watching the actions of malicious actors seeking to ban books, whitewash history, and demonize the LGBTQ+ community in Temecula and across the state." The comments by school board members raise concern over potential discriminatory intent per California Fair Education Code, and investigation has been launched. A letter from the Attorney General's Office highlighted, "Restricting what our children are taught based on animus or ideological opposition contradicts our societal values."
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I just want to say, we can do better, and we must do better, and I encourage you all to support human rights of every community member.
The next speaker is David Wilson, to be followed by Jeffrey Whitick.
Good evening, Mayor. Council members, city staff, fellow citizens. My name's Dave Wilson, president of Temecula Valley Historical Society. June 2nd, 2023, is the day members of the Historical Society will never forget. Perhaps you are familiar with the story of how a site, once so pivotal to the history of our valley, was failing into disaffair and ruins. By 1998, the owner of the property requested and received permits from the county to bulldoze the site. with plans for the property to become another nondescript Solus Southern California Shopping Center. On behalf of my fellow passionate board members of society membership, I am honored to announce that after twenty-seven years, the four-acre Vale Historic Headquarters is now officially designated as a national historic site by the U.S. Department of the Interior. In addition, in December of twenty twenty-two, the Butterfield Overland Trail, which in the mid eighteen-fifties was a route from Tipton, Missouri to San Francisco for settlers traveling west, a portion which runs diagonally through the headquarters property and is believed to be the last visible segment of the trail in an urban setting, received official designation as a national historic trail. In the mid-nineties, when the buildings and the footprint of the headquarters were being imminently threatened, a group of like-minded citizens found each other through a paragraph in the community section of the local newspaper condemning the project, ultimately forming the Grassroots Vale Ranch Restoration Association, commonly called VARA. A lawsuit to halt the project was soon filed with the county, the two plaintiffs being members of VARA. Let history show, in this instance, David beat Goliath with a settlement guaranteeing preservation of the buildings on a four-acre portion of the property. Two key VARA members, Daryl Farrenbach, the catalyst for virtually everything Vale Headquarters, and Dick Fox, who drafted the initial nomination for the historic status in two thousand and nine, which was rejected when the property management chose not to sign the nomination. They both sadly passed away earlier this year, but not before they each had the satisfaction knowing that this designation was imminent and would most likely occur in twenty twenty-three. VARA merged with the Temecula Valley Historical Society in twenty twenty. A second attempt to submit a nomination was then delayed due to COVID. In January of twenty twenty-two, Jen Sappington, Lisa Woodward, and Rebecca Farrenbach, the Historical Society Research and Preservation Committee, again rolled up their sleeves, this time with success. With this designation, a new audience immediately will seek out Temecula from points throughout the world as this elevates our valley's status as a cultural tourism magnet.
Your time is up. I'm so sorry. It's so good. Just wrap it up.
Okay. Just wanted to say that this is going to be a huge opportunity for us from a tourism standpoint, not only from a historical preservation standpoint. So thank you very much.
Thank you for-
All right.
That's great.
The next speaker is Jeffrey Whitick, to be followed by Dean Vasquez.
Welcome.
Thank you. And good evening. I also would like to applaud the Ready Commission for the presentation of the Pride Month proclamation. In spite of the success of the wonderful event, unfortunately, even tonight, we've heard that people believe attacks on Pride Month and the Pride proclamation are going to continue. Why do people feel this way? First, Councilmember Alexander has a history of using her city council position to speak out against groups, institutions, and ideas that do not align with her personal religious beliefs. Sadly, she attacked Pride Month last year, and people expect her to do the same again this year. Here is a recent text message sent by Councilmember Alexander in which she links Pride Month to demons. To me, I'm sorry, that's offensive. Second, during the last city council meeting, Councilmember Alexander actually told us that she intended to comment further about the Stonewall uprising and additionally intended to engage city council to help define what groups were included in the LGBTQIA acronym. Apparently, apparently, during the month, Alexander has been in contact with four-twelve church members, as illustrated by this email. In the email, Jacob Thompson, the media director of the four-twelve church, provided links to a series of videos explaining the terms that make up the LGBTQIA acronym. The majority of the city residents are hopeful that city council members practice good governance and lead with inclusivity and compassion rather than embracing this offensive, divisive rhetoric. Thank you.
And next speaker?
The next speaker is Dean Vasquez.
Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. I want to express some gratitude. Wow. Those aren't going to work. To the council. I think in many ways, you've made us better people in the city. I specifically want to call out the consistency of message we hear, and I'm talking specifically to a couple, a couple council members. You're telling us who you are. You're making it easy for a night like tonight. It's a very calm meeting here across town, not so much. You've shared your values, and you've maintained focus on exactly what's important to you. I want to thank you for being honest. You've made us a better city. Now, unfortunately, you made us a better city because you prepared us to fight and to fight elected officials and to fight what we've heard about from Ms. Alexander and others that are working to divide, are working to not include, and are working to create problems within our city based on an agenda that is outside the scope of your office or your seat. Our school board was elected on the same platform. Many of your peers are going to be facing some challenging times coming. We've heard tonight about the attacks within the pride community. No question, that has happened and likely will continue. And we have another challenge brewing from internal communications, we've read, to attack the potential probable or the funded growth of our hospital in adding mental health services. And I'm not sure why, but Mr. Kalfus, you seem to have an issue with that. Anytime we're seeing people take a group, differentiate them from the masses, and create a them, we create separation, and we create distance, and we create unsafety. I would like to think that this committee, this council, can do better. You've taught us to do better because, Ms. Alexander, you've been on the board here for a couple of years, and you've taught us how to prepare to resist the rest. So I want to express my gratitude for teaching us that we need to listen to what you say, believe who you are, and fight to make sure you're not reelected, and those that are in your community are also not tolerated. Thank you.
Next speaker?
The last speaker is Canine Support Teams. I don't have a specific name, but I'm guessing it's you all.
The puppies. Welcome.
Since we're last, I'll be brief. I'm Judy Hernandez. I'm the operations coordinator for Canine Support Teams. On behalf of all of us at Canine Support Teams, we sincerely thank the City of Temecula for this grant of twenty-five thousand dollars. With this funding, we're able to place two trained service dogs with two Temecula veterans, free of charge to the veteran. Funds to support the training and placement were spent at Temecula Businesses to help us achieve this goal. Canine Support Team's mission is to place well-trained service dogs with veterans and people with disabilities. We thank you very much.
Thank you. Adam, city clerk, are there any more speakers?
There are no more in-person speakers on non-agenda items.
Okay. Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and move on to city council reports. Do my colleagues, any of my colleagues have city council reports? Councilmember Kalfus?
Yes, I do. If we can put up the slide. There it is. It was a couple of weeks ago now. It's been three weeks since we had our last meeting, but in between this meeting and last meeting, that is one of my best friends there from high school, Blake English, who's the senior manager of Schools Program for Special Olympics in Southern California. And he's also leading efforts to bring in Special Olympics Unified Champion Schools to TVUSD. And in the middle there is a local Temecula Valley principal, who was once our science teacher in eighth grade and is now a principal. But we were honored to be the keynote speakers at this year's TVUSD Retirement Dinner, where there was over fifty-plus teachers and other employees within the school district who retired. So it was really just a full circle moment there, growing up in Temecula and going to the public school system and being able to be the keynote speaker. So I just want to say congratulations again to all of those teachers and public school members that retired this year. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Alexander, you're up.
I'll start with my first slide, please, from the Temecula Public Cemetery, please. All right, so first off, I just want to thank the Temecula Public Cemetery and the Knights of Columbus for inviting me out to be the keynote speaker as they recognized the six hundred military service members at that point in time. They are a true blessing to our community, and I just want to thank them, and I hope to be able to thank them a little bit further in the future for what they're doing. So once again, thank you for just recognizing the men and women that have served this country loyally and have given us our freedoms at this time that we have. Thank you. That's number one. The second one, as everybody has been talking about, yes, there is concern from the city. So I'm going to read this so everybody has an understanding of where I'm coming from, because safety has always been my number-one priority. As I'm asking my colleagues today to examine whether the LGBTQ proclamation should be given to children by the Temecula city, and should this be something our city should even be involved with at all? Last week, the Ready Commission celebrated the LGBTQ plus proclamation with children who attended Temecula High Schools. As a city council member, it is, as a city council member of this city, it is my obligation to ensure that true objective safety for all residents is met, specifically for our children who are easily influenced, vulnerable, and who are the most impressionable in our community. Council members, it is imperative for the safety of our children and our entire community that we define the plus. Mayor Pro temp Stuart, you are the most senior member on this board. Would the city ever award a contractor a blank check with a plus with no limitations? I've never seen it. Yet, according to a group called Queer in the World, there are over fifty different flags that are currently being flown under the LGBTQ plus flag. These flags represent different identities, sexual attractions, and most concerning sexual behaviors. These groups in our city's proclamation say all are welcome, the possibilities are endless. Yet, even within the LGBT community, there are, there are many who oppose flying these flags under their original LGBT flag, especially when they are targeting children. Where is your emotional and where is your moral and ethical line for each one of you as a city council member? If you don't oppose this proclamation being given to minors, we are celebrating and encouraging sexual activity and giving them sexual credit card with no limit. You are encouraging them to expose them to all sexual possibilities and exposing them to predators. What loving parent believes that exposing a child to BDSM flag, which stands for sexual bondage, discipline, domination, submission, sadism, masochism, which involves kink and fetish, is an okay thing to do? Until the city council discusses the boundaries of the plus, our children's well-being and lives will be continued to be damaged. My second question is, which groups fall under the plus, which groups do not, and why? Why is the city supporting children seventeen and under to become involved in over fifty groups that fall under the LGBTQ plus flag? How about some of these flags? Leather pride flag and rubber flag, also known as BDSM, bear clubs fag, flag, furies, bestiality, polyamory, and also known as polygamy, pedophiles, and MAPS flag, the minor attractive persons. I urge you all to look into Bill HB six-six-three-eight that just passed through the House of Connecticut that MAPS is currently moving forward to become a protected class. Soon, California will follow suit. MAPS and pedophilia is defined as a psychiatric disorder in which an adult or older adolescent experiences a primary or exclusive sexual attraction to pre�usent children. We will eventually see MAPS be recognized under this flag, and I hope this is our sand in the, our line in the sand. In closing, this city has my word that I will always protect and stand in the gaps for our children's objective safety in this community. I hope and pray that each of my colleagues will do the same. I look forward to bringing this to light in the future and having an honest, objective, true conversation without being the recipient of relentless and ominous attacks. Today, I cannot be associated with this proclamation being given by the city because it is given to children. I will be stepping off the dais if the mayor rereads this proclamation during his city council comments. Thank you.
Councilmember Brown? Okay. All right, I have several slides that I like to put up. Let's start with the Juneteenth event. So the past Saturday, we had our second annual Juneteenth, and it was just another great day in the city. A lot of folks came out and enjoyed culture, dancing, singing. It was just a great day in our community. It kind of included a couple of other things that we've been doing, obviously, the flag program that we started. It was a good way to meet a very diverse swath of Americans, and it was really cool. So these are some of the photos. Some of these kids are from Temecula Elementary School, which was really cool, and people that are, that came out to enjoy Juneteenth. And we also had the Meet the Mayor booth, which I've been doing as well. So I had a really good opportunity to talk to quite a few people at Juneteenth. So I just want to say thanks to TCSD and everyone for another great event. Thanks to Timmy D and all he does for getting that that event going. So appreciate that. Okay, we'll put up the fireworks video slash slide. So we have some concerns in our community with illegal fireworks, and I want to let everybody know, obviously, with Fourth of July coming up, that it is illegal to shoot off fireworks in your neighborhood, your home, your street. And you really want to think about, you know, not just the pets, because we had puppies here tonight, you know, but our veterans. I think we don't understand what happens when fireworks are shot off. It can, it can be devastating and traumatizing for veterans. And so as a community that values our military families and our veterans, I want to encourage everyone to not light off fireworks. And Riverside County Sheriff's has a, their program, if you light it, we'll write it. So let's just please not do that. We put a lot of time and energy into our Fourth of July fireworks at Ronald Reagan Sports Park, and they can be seen for miles around. I believe Pachanga is also doing fireworks that night as well. So there's not going to be a shortage of fireworks in our city. So we'd encourage everyone to keep the fireworks unlit this year and going forward. All right, I will be reading the Pride proclamation. So Councilmember Alexander, feel free to step away. So whereas Pride Month commemorates the June nineteen sixty-nine uprising at Stonewall in New York City, where members of the LGBTQ plus community and allies rose to fight discriminatory laws that have been since declared unconstitutional, and whereas the month of pride is celebrated through various recognitions and activities in support of the LGBTQ plus community locally, statewide, nationally, and internationally, and whereas LGBTQ plus individuals, families, and supporters are an integral part of the fabric of a community and contribute to the overall economy and quality of life, and whereas LGBTQ plus members are represented in the public and private sectors as professionals, business owners, educators, students, volunteers, veterans, and more, and whereas Temecula appreciates the value and dignity of each person that acknowledges the important contributions of the LGBTQ plus community to promote principles of equality, acceptance, and love, and whereas these contributions include those of the LGBTQ plus youth of the community and their allies, including the Chaparral High School GSA, the Great Oak High School GSA, Temecula Valley High School Pride Club, and Rancho Vista High School Pride Club. And whereas it is imperative that young people in our community feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders, regardless of their sexual orientation, gender identity, or other expression, and whereas all are welcome in the City of Temecula to live, work, and play, and every individual and family of any diversity deserves a safe and happy home supported by friends and neighbors. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Zaxshank, on behalf of the City of Temecula hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty-three to be Pride Month in recognition and support, in recognition and support of the LGBTQ plus individuals, families, and community. And, and I can say, you know, I was there, and there's a ton of value having the proclamations at the Ready Commission. So I want to thank the Ready Commission for the time and energy that you put in into that, and the community at large really showed up, and that room was full of a lot of love, and I think it was felt by everyone in that space. So thank you. you. And I wanted to end on a really positive note, so we're going to queue up a quick video, just a little backstory. As mayor, I wanted to do something fun and informative, and we came up with a...with a quick little video series. It's called Just the Facts with Zach, and we're going to kind of walk through our Quality of Life Master Plan over the next few months. So this is the first episode. So if we could go ahead and roll the episode. Hey there, Temecula. I'm Mayor Zach Schwank, and I would like to welcome you to Just the Facts with Zach. Over the next few months, we will take you on an upbeat and informative journey around our community. For each episode, we will use the recently adopted Quality of Life Master Plan as our blueprint to examine how we, as local government, work to impact the residents, businesses, and visitors of Temecula. In this episode, we'll take a look at the equity core value hard at work in the community. As we make strides towards one of our equity goals of fostering a healthy environment and providing prosperous opportunities for all residents of Temecula, we turn to our Community Services Department and our annual Culture Fest. To coincide with World Day for Cultural Diversity, we hosted for a second year a welcoming, fun, and informative event celebrating the many different cultures and traditions that represent the entirety of our community. Our vision through Culture Fest is to support a sense of belonging for everyone who lives, works, and plays in Temecula. We know that people who feel connected to their community are happier and healthier and contribute even more to the fabric of Temecula. I sure hope you enjoyed learning more about one of the ways we impact our residents, businesses, and visitors here in Temecula, and how we bring our Quality of Life Master Plan to life. Take care, and I hope you all can get outside, live, experience, and enjoy everything Temecula offers. All right, we'll look forward to...yeah, thanks. We just wanted to have a little fun with what we do and really highlight a lot of the great things that we do in our community. So we thought that was a good way to do it. So we'll look forward to a few more of those episodes as we walk through the Quality of Life Master Plan. Okay, anything else from my colleagues? All right, we will move on to our consent calendar. Item number one, we're going to waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in the agenda. Item number two, approve action amendments of May 23rd and May 25th, 2023. Item number three, approve list of demands. Item number four, adopt ordinance number 2023-04, amending Chapter 10.44 of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding Golf Carts on City Roadways. This is the second reading. Item five, adopt ordinance number 2023-05, amending Section 10.28.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding Prima Facia Speed Limits on Certain Streets. This is the second reading. Item number six is adopt ordinance number 2023-06, repealing Temecula Municipal Code Chapters 2.44 and 2.48 Regarding Commissions, second reading. Item seven, adopt resolution approving the statement of investment policy and delegating investment authority to the city treasurer. Item eight, approve annual renew of city insurance policies. Item number nine, is approved third amendment to the broker fee agreement between the city and Arthur J. Gallagher and Risk Management Services. Item 10, approve first amendment with Apple One for temporary staffing services. 11, adopt resolution acknowledging receipt of the annual inspection report pursuant to SB 1205. Item 12, approve recycle water agreements with Rancho California Water District for Kent-Hendegaard Memorial Park and Presley Development. Item 13, approve agreement with Yenox LLC, hope I pronounced that properly, for on-call traffic signal and streetlight maintenance services for fiscal years 2024 through 28. 14, approve amendment number one to Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee Program Agreement to reimbursement Tump funds with Riverside...Western Riverside Council of Governments for the Diaz Road Expansion, PW 17-25. 15, approve first amendment to the agreement with Aztec Landscape Inc., DBA Aztec Janitorial Inc. for janitorial services for park restrooms for fiscal years 2023 through 2024. Item 16, approve second amendment to the minor maintenance agreement with Mariposa Tree Management Inc. for citywide tree trimming maintenance services. 17, approve third amendment to the minor maintenance agreement for landscape maintenance services with Neavis Landscape Inc. With that, I will entertain a motion and a second.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let us vote. Okay, and that passes 5-0. And with this, I'll recess the city council meeting and turn it over to President Stewart.
I'll call to order the Temecula Community Service District meeting. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. Are there any public comments? All right, so we'll go on to the consent calendar, which is item number 18, approve action minutes of May 23rd, 2023. And number 19, approve agreement with Timmy D. Production Inc. for entertainment and technical services. Oh, and item 20, approve second amendment to TNG Global LLC, DBA St. Nick's for Holiday Decor.
I'll move consent.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Please vote. All right, that passes 5-0. So, community director, do we have a report?
Yes, just one slide. There we go. We'd just like to invite the public to join us for the annual 4th of July parade and extravaganza. It's just a few weeks away, and you can start your day, as always, with our parade, which starts at 10:00 a.m. sharp here in Old Town. Highly recommend you get here early because it's very popular, and all those seats along the streets will fill up. And then, starting at 2:00 p.m., you can head on over to Ronald Reagan Sports Park for our annual extravaganza. Very excited to be having this again. Last year was our first year back after a couple of years off, and the response was absolutely overwhelming, and we are looking forward to repeating that again. There will be fun and music starting at 2:00, vendors, lots of food, live bands playing, and then fireworks promptly at 9:00. So, looking forward to seeing everyone there. That concludes my report.
Thank you. General manager?
Nothing further, Mr. President.
All right, anything from the Board of Directors?
No.
Okay, well, I do want to put up there, we go, the summer concert series, as far as I'm concerned, is probably the best thing in Temecula. It's a free concert series that starts this Thursday with Jumpin' Jack Flash, and it ends July 27th with Journey Escape, which I don't know if you've ever heard Journey Escape. They are amazing. You swear you're at a real Journey concert. I mean, they're that good. So, and that's going to be right here at City Hall. So it should be a packed house, but there's construction going on at the CRC, so the first one's going to be a little wonky, but...but Jumpin' Jack Flash is amazing, too. So please come out. It's a free concert. It's kind of like you step back in time and you're part of a small-town event. So it's a great, great time. People are dancing in the streets, and it's just a...it's just a really, really fun time. So this Thursday, 7:00, but be there early because the place does pack out.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for bringing up the CRC construction. If I can just jump on that real quick and mention, for that first concert, everything is accessible in the amphitheater. You'll be able to hear the band, just like always. There will be portable restrooms, however. There may be some restroom access inside the building, but we're bringing in portables just to be safe. So, but you can still enjoy the concert this Thursday.
Perfect.
Thanks.
All right, with that, I will adjourn to the next one.
All right, and I will readjourn the Temecula City Council meeting. This is the joint meeting, City Council, Community Services District, Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Ag...Agency, and our public hearing. Item 21, approve fiscal years 2024 through 28 Capital Improvement Program, CIP, and adopt fiscal year 2023 through 24 CIP and annual operating budgets for the city of Temecula, the Temecula Community Services District, TCSD, and the Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, SARDA. May we have a staff report, please?
And Mr. Mayor, if you'll recall, we're going to go ahead and hear public comments on this first, as this is the budget item.
That's right, I do recall that now. Thank you.
And we do have a few...we have four speakers. Each speaker, because it is a public hearing agenda item, it has five minutes. So the first speaker is Lee Rosu, to be followed by Louis Todd.
I'm here to speak against, or to express my concern with item 21 in the agenda, which is the CIP for 24, 28. I'm...I lived in Temecula for the last 13 years, specifically in Los Ranchitos. Traffic and safety is a concern for us as a community, and I suspect at city level, and widening that road is not going to help with those items. 45 miles per hour on that street, it's too high considering the driveways coming onto the...onto the road. By the way, the same speed limit you have in Pechanga Parkway, an arterial street with four lanes and medians. So right there, when you compare those two streets, it just doesn't make sense to have...to have a...that speed limit. At the same time, I think that your thoughts of widening the road has to do with the traffic lately, and usually that's associated...I've noticed, as I live here, that it's associated with the traffic patterns on the freeway. Whenever the freeway gets backed up, Inez gets backed up. So in a way, commuters create this problem. So I think it would be sad to have the commuters dictate what's happening in our community. We, as residents, should have a voice more than the commuters. And widening the road is not going to make it any safer, it's going to bring more traffic. On our website, on Los Ranchitos, we show another experiment that happened in Texas where they widened a full freeway hoping to improve traffic. It turned out it was still bad, after spending millions on that. I think a better approach should be to use the money towards improving that interchange at 215 and 15, as that's causing the whole problem. The freeway is going to flow...the traffic is going to flow better on 15. Our roads will be better and safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Louis Todd, to be followed by Stephen Benavides.
Welcome.
Thank you. Mayor, council members, my name's Louis Todd. My wife and I moved to Temecula in 1986, before there was a traffic signal planted in the city. About 12 years ago, we moved to Los Ranchitos, our retirement home. And what we've seen in that 12 years is a dramatic increase in the speed limit in front of our home. We live on Deportola. We see accidents more often than not. People pass when you drive the speed limit. We're very concerned about the proposal to be to increase the traffic lanes to four lanes. Right now, it's difficult for us to get in and out of our driveway. We literally have to drive around the block to be able to drive into our driveway safely for fear that we're going to be rear-ended. Recently, our son moved home. My wife and I are grandparents for the first time, and it's brought a new awareness of safety of having that little granddaughter. And so we're so concerned about entering and exiting out of our driveway. We would like to see the city take a hard look at reducing the speed limit in our neighborhood. And I know that the...the plans say you can't reduce the speed limit because it creates a traffic backup. But we're a neighborhood. These are our driveways. There's no buffer zone between our driveway and Deportola and Inez Road. We exit or enter directly there. I have a horse crossing next to me. You guys all know Jack, who owned Richie's Diner. The day that he stopped to have a conversation with me, he had his granddaughters riding on a horse...horses, and they went to cross right next to my property. There was no signalized traffic center. They almost got hit by a car. That propagated me reaching out to the city staff about installing safety crossings at various locations. I particularly...I'm not a horse rider, but we have horse trails throughout our community, and everybody that has a horse on their property more than likely enters or exits onto the main thoroughfare through there, and it's just simply unsafe. When I looked at the circulation element, and I can't recite it exactly, I didn't bring any notes with me, but I think there's five or six key criteria items on there, and I would think that each and every one of you would consider safety being the first and foremost important thing in any plan that was put forward. But the city of Temecula has chosen safety as number two. They put circulation as number one. I don't think any one of you would choose to put convenience, circulation, in front of safety. We're asking that you please take a look at the speed limit on Inez and Deportola now. We know what the future plans are, and if the widening happens, it's gonna...it's gonna be even worse. We supported the roundabout to help facilitate traffic moving through, and what we've seen is a tremendous amount of accidents at the roundabout. Roundabouts are supposed to be safe. It's 15 miles an hour. But what you guys have done is you have a 45 mile an hour speed limit entering into a 15 mile an hour roundabout. It doesn't make sense. There's not enough buffer zone for people to slow down effectively. And so we get accident after accident after accident. There's a crosswalk through that roundabout. Our horses cross through that roundabout. I don't think you guys would plan to not have safety in any of the decisions that you make, and I would just ask that you put that first and foremost. Think about each one of the homeowners that lives along there, and the safety of them entering and exiting their driveways. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is Stephen Benavides, and then the last speaker is Steve Sommers.
Okay, welcome.
Good evening. My name is Steve Benavides. I've lived in Temecula, excuse me, for 15 years. My house is located...I'm the third driveway in Los Ranchitos after you turned right on Santiago. And, excuse me, my voice is gone. My property has the horse crossing on it. I have had three accidents on my property, high speed. I've lost two mailboxes that were taken out at very high speed by intoxicated people coming from Old Town, and the horse crossing signs that demarcate our horse crossing on Inez are on my property. That's a huge sign with a...with a battery pack and a solar panel, and that got taken out and almost destroyed a car. The mailboxes, when they take off, they take out sections of my fence because they're hit at 50 miles an hour. So I live exactly a quarter mile...my driveway is a quarter mile from Santiago, and that's where the drag strip starts. So I know this is an agenda item that has not even been funded, but as we pointed out at our...at our Planning Commission meeting last week, my community is in need of some help now. This is an immediate problem. This is not going away. My neighbor who lives at the turnabout has had 18 accidents in front of his house. So I can tell you to the...you know, most of these people that are causing the extreme hazard and the overuse of that section, especially in the afternoon, we can all tell you to the day when Google Maps and Apple Traffic changed their...their paradigm and sent people through our neighborhood. We have been here since before Temecula was a city. We are a residential equestrian community. I do not feel safe walking my animals or my wife down Inez Road. So we walk down Cabrillo because Inez is simply not usable. So I know that you want to have it to two lanes, but if you fill it to two lanes, it's just going to fill up with two lanes of traffic. There is no amount of widening that can help mitigate the traffic jams that happen in the afternoon because there's not enough room on the 15. But we are in trouble in our neighborhood. We are...my truck is 52 feet long with the trailer. I cannot pull out of my driveway without using the entire road. And like this afternoon, when I came over to this meeting, I had to wait a very long time to turn left out of my driveway because, of course, it's bumper-to-bumper, and nobody wants to stop. Now, I know traffic's not going to go away, but I have to tell you, I love the traffic. I love the traffic, because if the traffic is backed up in front of my house, they're not going 100 miles an hour. And they go a lot faster than that at night when there's nobody there, because there's no enforcement on Inez until about 2:00 in the morning. And at 2:00 in the morning, there's a police officer that likes to stop and watch the signal at Santiago, and the drunks roll through that signal, and they get pulled over on my property because that's...I'm the right amount for them to get down. And so I get to see the flashing blue lights and the tow truck come. But at least they didn't take my mailbox out. They didn't go through my fence. They didn't... didn't endanger myself or my animals. And I hope that we get some help if we just leave Inez a single-lane road. It's a single-lane road with a lot of people who have big trucks, and unfortunately, the speed limit's forty-five miles an hour. I don't think there's many places in this city where we have residential driveways with forty-five mile an hour speed limits. So please give this some consideration. I know it's coming up in a couple of years, but we are suffering now, and what you are planning is not going to mitigate the essential problems that we have. It's not going to change a fifteen freeway, it's not going to change the speeding. A lower limit, leaving it a single road is the best option that we can see for our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The last speaker is Steve Sommers.
Well, thank you for the opportunity to speak, Honorable Mayor and our City Council. My name's Steve Sommers. I actually have been here only a few years, so relatively shorter compared to some of my neighbors, but my wife and I have deep ties to the city through her uncle Bob Morris, who I think everybody knows. We moved into Los Ranchitos because we are horse folks. We do have horses. And that's a huge draw to that neighborhood. I was actually told about this neighborhood by a friend of mine years ago, and he said it's the greatest place on earth. And I have to tell you, we should have moved here twenty-five years ago. We moved down here, we moved our civil engineering firm, our development firm, all of our employees, our kids, everybody came with us down here. So we've made an enormous investment in this city through our company, through our commercial properties, through our residential properties. So when we show concern about our community, it's because we've invested heavily in it. And we do appreciate what the council does. I work regularly with the city. We've engineered all the properties, all the buildings up Alvarado for Moje Salagi. We've put it, in our few years, we've put a pretty significant dent in our reputation here in this city in trying to make a stake for us, for our seven grandkids and our three children. And what I want to say is, first, thank you to all my neighbors. I think they articulated their points extremely well. I've spoken in front of many councils as an engineer for my clients and as a proponent for my own development projects. In those councils, they were there for their constituents, to hear what their concerns were, to basically guard over those folks. Because generally, I'm not a resident in those cities. So I look to them to address the concerns of their constituents, to hear the concerns of their constituents. We often meet with the council well before any project, which is what I kind of believe I'm doing here now. And now, I come to you as a resident and as my constituent, or as my representatives, and I just say, please hear our concerns. This is a neighborhood that predates the development around it. This is a neighborhood that is somewhat stuck in the middle of two developed arterial roads, being Inez and Deportola further down. But these folks do have driveways that front these roads. You cannot, from an engineering standpoint, and I think that my buddy Ron back there would agree, those driveways are going to be a problem on an arterial, what is really effectively becoming an arterial highway at rush hour. We do have animals. I can tell you that when you stress those roads like that, it pushes more folks through our neighborhood more and more. They figure out it's a cut-through, they come down Cabrillo. I'll tell you one scenario, and it's not an isolated scenario, but I was coming from the Rose Garden. I was being passed by a young man in his very low car. He couldn't see over that rise, because you see, Cabrillo is designed as a country road. It doesn't have the sight distance horizontally or vertically that you would have on a larger road. Had I not pulled in front of him when he tried to pass me, he would have taken out a grandma, a grandpa, and three kids. Because he couldn't see over that rise, and that's what the cut-through traffic does. It is, it will ruin our quality of life. So as our council, as your constituent, please guard our quality of life. We live there. Our neighborhood predates a lot of these other developments. So no, it's maybe not something you would build today, but it's there, we're very proud of it. We live there, we pay quite a bit of money to live there. Most of us have significant investment in our properties because they're horse properties, because we can have our animals, because we can enjoy the lifestyle that we love. But now, it's your turn to consider those factors when you go forward with the general plan, and I hope you do. And I thank you very much for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much. All right, thank you to all the speakers that came tonight. Madam City Clerk, that was the final speaker. Okay, well, with that, we'll turn it over to our city manager for a presentation.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, before I begin, I just want to let the residents know that spoke, we heard your concerns, and we're certainly prepared to speak to those on the back end of the AOB and the CIP presentation tonight, as it's part of a bigger conversation. As the speakers know, we're in the middle of our general plan, which includes the circulation element. We'll be working on that over the next couple of years. But in a sense, the stretch of roadway of concern, as the speaker mentioned, is not funded, it's nothing eminent, it's something that's in the CIP while we go through the general plan and the circulation element. So we can, Pat can elaborate on that a little more, but I wanted the speakers to know they've been heard. And with that, I'll jump into the presentation this evening, so. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. I have long held that one of the hallmarks of our great city has been the management of our finances, which I will call fiscal stewardship. For over thirty years, city councils and city staff have collectively made very solid financial decisions, wise investments in needed capital projects, investments in our workforce, and even investments in revenue-generating projects or projects that would ultimately save us money. Just because we are a government agency, we can still maintain a great deal of thoughtfulness, many times with a return on our investment or an ROI mindset. I believe we have proven we can be strategic while fulfilling our public obligations. This year is no different. I am pleased to share again this year that the city's operating budget is balanced, the community services budget is balanced, the community, the capital improvement program remains robust and well-funded. As shared in February, when we provided the mid-year financial update, through intentional strategic efforts on the part of this city council, the city fared better than anticipated through the pandemic years. And although our local economy has rebounded, I would still characterize recent signs as more of a softening of our economy going forward, and our fiscal planning reflects this. We are not ready to declare a recession, but many indicators tell us we are approaching a leveling off of revenue, and that was our fiscally conservative approach when building these extensive budget documents for your consideration. As the city council knows, we held a budget workshop on Thursday, May twenty-fifth, where we discussed, outlined, and detailed budget recommendations, we highlighted projects, and we called out areas that we as a city should continue to keep on our collective financial radar. This presentation will reflect that of the budget workshop. Tonight, our executive staff, representing the exceptional efforts of their respective departments, will walk you through the budget process and provide the highlights of the annual operating and capital improvement program budgets. Director of Finance Jennifer Hennessy will summarize operating budgets for the general fund and Measure S Fund, which will be discussed later in the presentation about reporting and how we message Measure S as a general fund revenue. Lieutenant Steve Cussi, who is sitting in for Captain Chris Durham, will present the sheriff's budget and highlight the department's special teams. Fire Chief John Crater will present the fire department budget. Director of Community Services Erica Russo will discuss the TCSD budget highlights, programs, and events. And Director of Public Works Pat Thomas will discuss the capital improvement program budget. Deputy City Manager Luke Watson will provide an update on the city's affordable housing projects. And finally, we will close with topics we've identified as future planning items to delve into further over the next few months. As with previous budget presentations, we would like to suggest that we be allowed to run through the entire program and slides, and then we will pause on the backend for discussion and question and answers. We believe that many of the questions may be answered or clarified when the whole budget picture is explained surrounding the AOB, the CIP, the TCSD, and the five-year forecast. As you will see throughout tonight's presentation, the city's financial position remains healthy, with all funds balanced and all reserves fully funded. The budget process begins each year in January with a review of the current year's budget and the development of revenue projections and the preliminary five-year forecasts, which serves as the baseline budget for the ensuing year. In early February, staff presented the budget priorities and key fiscal policies to the council for discussion and potential changes for the upcoming budget. Council's confirmation of the priorities served as the foundation upon which staff developed the proposed budget. Additionally, staff held budget engagement sessions with each of the city's four commissions during February and March to obtain feedback on community priorities. The commission members' feedback has been incorporated into the budget recommendations, and we have a separate slide coming up that summarizes their feedback. During the month of April, departments present their requests via several internal review meetings, which culminate in the development of the proposed budget and capital improvement program budget. Any changes to the proposed budget and CIP identified at the budget workshop or from staff were incorporated into the final operating capital budgets, which are being presented this evening. From the budget engagement sessions with the city commissions, several themes emerged from the discussions, and they include: The commissioners overwhelmingly agree that the city's investment in resources are indeed in line with the community's priorities. Public safety should remain the city's top priority. A continued investment to address traffic congestion and affordable housing options is highly valued. And having ongoing community engagement is vital for the city and should continue into the future. You will see that we've taken these comments to heart and have incorporated them throughout the budget and the CIP. From the top-rated ISO-2 fire department, from Chief John Crater, to the proactive approach to policing that you will hear from by Lieutenant Steve Cussi, to the wide-ranging investment in infrastructure projects that Pat Thomas will share when presenting the CIP, the city remains safety-focused and centered on providing a high quality of life to its residents. Strategic planning is foundational in the city's planning efforts to ensure that the priorities of the council and the community remain at the forefront and are reflected in the city's operating budget and capital improvement program. Projects and programs included in the budget and CIP must be consistent with the city's core values identified in the Quality of Life Master Plan, or the QLMP. Performance indicators are measured annually to track progress and the completion of goals and objectives. On November fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, the city council adopted the Quality of Life Master Plan, which serves as a community-centric planning document of priorities and values for the next twenty years. The QLMP identifies the city's seven core values, including a healthy and livable city, economic prosperity, a safe and prepared community, sustainable and resilient city, transportation mobility and connectivity, accountable and responsive city government, and the newest additional core value of equity. The Long Ranging Planning Division has developed a four-phase, multi-year process to update the general plan. Phase one is complete and includes the updates to the housing and public safety elements. Phase two is in process and includes the updated QLMP, an analysis of the city's climate action plan, and the development of a complete streets policy document. Phase three will include a fiscal land use study to analyze the city's remaining development capacity and market absorption potential for residential, commercial, and industrial development, and will be completed by the fall of twenty-twenty-three. The final phase is to work with the General Plan Advisory Committee to update the general plan and the environmental impact report over an eighteen-month timeframe. In December of twenty-twenty-two, the council approved a multi-year strategy to pay down the city's debt and unfunded liabilities. To date, both the Civic Center and Margarita Recreation Center loans have been paid in full, creating an annual savings of two-point-two million. Additionally, the city paid seven-point-two-five million towards the CalPERS unfunded pension liability, creating annual ongoing savings of nine-hundred thousand per year. As shown here in the chart, this next fiscal year, we plan to pay off the other post-employment benefits known as OPEB, unfunded liability, which relates to the retiree health benefit that was afforded to employees who joined the city prior to two thousand and five. Another ten-point-five million will go towards the pension liability, creating cumulative annual savings of four-point-six million. I'm pleased to share that we are still in a position to meet our goal of being completely debt-free in seven years, saving the city nearly thirty-four million dollars in interest payments. At this time, Director of Finance Jennifer Hennessy will now review the fiscal impacts of the proposed general fund and the Measure S budgets.
Thanks, Erin. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. The general fund serves as the city's primary operating fund and provides the funding required to deliver public safety, public works, community development, and administrative services to the city of Temecula. General fund revenue is projected to reach one-hundred-and-twelve million dollars, with sales tax contributing forty-four percent of total revenue. Expenditures are projected to be ninety-six million next fiscal year and reflect the list of minor updates identified by staff since the budget workshop, as outlined in the agenda report. Contributions to other funds include seven-hundred-and-sixty-six thousand dollar transfer to the capital improvement program for the general plan update and the I-15 congestion relief project. The general fund will contribute one-point-five million into the fire facility acquisition fund to build up a reserve for the future acquisition of Fire Station Twelve in Old Town, bringing the reserve balance to four-point-five million. And as part of the debt liability paydown strategy Erin mentioned previously, fifteen-point-nine million dollars in available general fund balance will go towards the OPEB and pension unfunded liabilities to generate cumulative ongoing savings of four-point-six million dollars. General fund revenue is projected to remain flat compared to the prior year, with revenues totaling one-hundred-and-twelve-point-three million. Sales tax, property tax, and Measure S are all forecasted in conjunction with the city's consultant, HDL Companies, whose team is dedicated to analyzing transaction-level detail and statewide economic trends. While a recession is not yet forecasted by HDL, a flattening of the economy is, and sales tax revenue projections reflect this forecast. Property tax and property tax in lieu of vehicle license fee revenues are based on home valuations from the prior year and reflect inflationary growth of four-point-seven percent and five-point-three percent respectively. Franchise fees reflect the increasing utility rates, primarily for electric and gas services. TOT, or transient occupancy tax, is projected to be flat compared to the current year. While occupancy rates have increased, the average daily rate charged by hotels has decreased. And Measure C is the parcel tax approved in nineteen ninety-seven at seventy-four dollars and forty-four cents per home per year. This revenue is allocated fifty percent to parks maintenance and fifty percent to TCSD operations, and is expected to increase by one-point-eight percent next year. Licenses and permits revenue comes from the various building permits, plan check fees, and other development-related revenue, and is projected to increase by two percent. Measure S revenue reflects funding for eleven sheriff's deputies, staffing for Fire Station Ninety-Five, future asset replacement, and general support of public safety. Transfers in reflects monies from the gas tax fund, the supplemental law enforcement grant, and five million dollars from the city's pension trust that will be utilized to pay down a portion of the unfunded liability. And reimbursement revenue includes the payments for public services that are levied in various community facilities districts. And finally, the other category shows a large decline due to the receipt of one-time ARPA funding from the federal government in the prior year. And again, the total general fund revenue is projected to be one-hundred-and-twelve-point-three million. Total general fund expenditures are projected to increase by four-point-two percent to ninety-six million, of which fifty-six percent is dedicated to public safety. Public works makes up twenty percent of the general fund and is expected to increase four-point-eight percent due to primary labor agreement adjustments and the administration of a larger CIP program. City administration makes up fifteen percent and is expected to increase nine-point-nine percent due mostly to labor agreement adjustments, and community development makes up nine percent of the general fund and is expected to increase by five-point-four percent due to inflation. The non-departmental category includes- The non-departmental category includes payments for the annual retiree medical contribution, PERS replacement benefit, and continuity staffing reserve, all offset by an estimated nine-hundred-thousand-dollar reduction in the city's CalPERS pension cost as a result of the liability paydown in twenty twenty-two. I'll now turn the presentation over to Lieutenant Steve Cussy, who will present the Sheriff's Department budget.
Good evening again, Mayor, City Council, and executive staff. The Temecula Sheriff's Department budget of forty-two million reflects a three-point-nine percent increase over the prior year. The budget includes an estimated two-point-five increase in the sheriff's contract rate, plus the annual motorcycle replacement program, which includes two new motorcycles this year, and a purchase of a new drone to help support law enforcement operations. Staffing levels provided by the contract total one-hundred-and-seventeen sworn deputies, eighteen community service officers, exceeding the target staffing ratio of one sworn deputy per one-thousand residents. The city contracts with Riverside County Sheriff to provide patrol coverage and dedicated sworn positions, which serve as a command officer in various special teams, including the recently-created roguelie burglary suppression team, which is a significant impact in reducing crime and increasing safety in our city. The team consists of a sergeant, two investigators, two deputies with the sole purpose to identify and apprehend suspects committing residential and commercial burglaries and robberies in our city. The Metro Team was created last fiscal year to ensure safety in Old Town by providing twenty-thousand hours of dedicated law enforcement per year. It is now stationed in the newly expanded and renovated Old Town Temecula substation. This will decrease their response times and provide patrol hours to Old Town, since Metro Team members will no longer respond from the Southwest Station at the start of their shifts. The core, Community Outreach, Resource, and Engagement Team, will continue to address quality-of-life issues concerned by working closely with the city's code enforcement, building and safety, TCSD, information technologies, and the fire department, as well as neighborhood watch programs, community education, and more. In addition to these, the city also contracts for deputies assigned to special enforcement teams, school resource deputies, mall deputies, and a traffic team. I will now turn over the presentation to Fire Chief John Crater to present the fire budget.
Thank you, LT. The fire budget for next year is projected to be twenty-two-point-nine million. However, the structural tax credit of eleven-point-one million is deducted by the county, leaving the net cost to the city of eleven-point-eight million. The budget includes staffing levels of four firefighters per fire engine and ladder truck with a total number of, with a seventy-one, with a total of seventy-one fire personnel. This would continue to meet the CAL-OSHA requirement for two-in, two-out for firefighter safety during structured fires, and serve pivotal, in a pivotal factor in recent upgrades in the ISO two rating, which puts the city in the top seven percent nationwide for structure fire suppressing capabilities. A total of four-point-five million has been set aside for future acquisition, acquisition of Fire Station Twelve in Old Town. Recent negotiations with the county have led to a cost-sharing agreement for staffing at Station Ninety-Five, where the county will pay approximately one million for four positions at that station. In August of two thousand and twenty-two, the state entered into a new MOU with CAL-Fire, which will provide several staffing and benefit adjustments, as noted on the slide. Additionally, the current work week is proposed to decrease from seventy-two hours per week to sixty-six hours per week. This to accommodate the proposed schedule change will take effect in November of two thousand and twenty-four. Six new firefighter positions have been added to the general fund five-year forecast. I'll turn it back over to Jennifer to finish up the general fund section of the presentation.
Thanks, Chief. In addition to the safety departments, the general fund also includes the public works, community development, and administrative departments, which has a combined budget of forty-two million dollars, or a six-point-six increase over the prior year, due primarily to labor agreement adjustments and the purchase of capital outlay equipment for newly-added positions, and a refresh of the city's website to improve the experience of our visitors utilizing the city's website. Also included in this category are anticipated savings in the CalPERS employer contribution rate for employee pension costs. The ending fund balance for the general fund is projected to be thirty-six-point-six million next fiscal year. Reserves are fully funded at twenty-four million, and after deducting for future commitments, the available fund balance is projected to be eleven-point-seven million. This slide illustrates the different components of the thirty-six-point-six-million-dollar fund balance. Per budget policy, twenty percent of operating expenditures are set aside into the reserve for economic uncertainty, and an additional five percent of operating expenditures are set aside into the secondary reserve. These funds are utilized in the event of a major disaster, significant loss in revenue, or for large unexpected expenditures. Reserves are projected to reach twenty-four million next year. A portion of the fund balance is assigned and/or committed to future costs associated with capital projects previously approved in the five-year CIP and the Pachanga-funded deputy, as the funds are paid in advance. An unassigned fund balance of eleven-point-seven million is the amount available for future one-time appropriations. The city has a longstanding practice of not only budgeting for the next fiscal year, but for the next five fiscal years. This long-term approach to financial management has served us well, as we're able to forecast the long-term fiscal impacts of operational decisions made in the present. This slide illustrates the strong fiscal position of the city's general fund, which is structurally balanced with revenues exceeding expenditures. Both revenues and expenditures reflect realistic growth projections and include any known and anticipated contractual obligations, as well as an economic slowdown predicted to begin in twenty twenty-three, as indicated by the flat revenue trend line on the chart. This next slide further illustrates the fiscal health of the general fund by showing that fund balance remains steady and reserves are meeting desired levels over the next five years. Measure S is the one-cent transactions and use tax approved by Temecula voters in November of twenty sixteen. This revenue source became effective in April of twenty seventeen and has generated nearly one-hundred-and-sixty-two million dollars over the past six years. As Erin mentioned in his introduction, Measure S is technically considered a general fund revenue, however, we've accounted for it in a separate fund to maximize transparency. Fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four Measure S revenue is expected to remain flat at forty million dollars, and total appropriations of forty-five-point-seven million are in line with council's policy guidelines prioritizing public safety, asset management, capital projects, and community services. Keep clicking. There we go. Public safety funding of nine-point-nine million is recommended to augment the sheriff and fire departments' budgets by providing funding for eleven sheriff's deputies, Fire Station Ninety-Five staffing, and the future replacement of the fire ladder truck and inspection vehicles. Asset management funding of nearly four-point-six million includes the deposit of two million dollars into the streets maintenance fund, and five-hundred thousand into the technology replacement fund to further enhance cybersecurity, and just over two million dollars into the facilities replacement fund. Capital project investments total just under sixteen million dollars, with one-point-four million added to the CRC renovation project, one-point-three million for the design of the future Uptown Temecula Sports Park, and an additional one-point-one million added to the pickleball courts project, bringing the total project cost to three-point-three million for this highly-desired amenity. And general and community services funding totals fifteen-point-three million, which is primarily dedicated to TCSD operations and library funding. The five-year forecast is also prepared for the Measure S fund, as shown here, and revenues projected to remain flat over the next few years then slowly increases as the economy begins to improve. Annual appropriations gradually shift from funding CIP projects towards funding higher levels of public safety and general services over time. The ending fund balance in each year is at a healthy level and available for any unforeseen one-time projects or programs. As the city rebounded from the pandemic, revenues exceeded expectations while operating expenditures were prudently managed in light of unforeseen nature of the economy. As such, the available fund balance within the general fund grew and afforded the city the opportunity to give back to the community and help local businesses and nonprofits rebound from the pandemic. A total of fourteen million eighty thousand was appropriated by the council to establish the Community Reinvestment Fund and created six funding categories across the broad range of services to support the local community. This slide summarizes the specific programs within each of the six funding categories, and to date, the city has spent and/or committed seven-point-three million dollars, as shown here. The budget includes the phased spending of the remaining CRP funding over the next two fiscal years. I'll now turn the presentation over to the Director of Community Services, Erica Russo, who will walk you through the TCSD operations budget.
Good evening. The mission of TCSD is to improve the quality of life for our residents through a complement of facilities, programs, services, events, and activities, or as we like to say, creating community through people, parks, and programs. TCSD serves the community by providing essential access to programs, events, facilities, and services that support the physical and mental health and wellness of people of all ages. This broad umbrella of community services is parks and rec, and so much more, including inclusive senior and youth services, workforce and education development, homeless outreach, sports, aquatics, and recreation classes and activities, special events, cultural arts, community engagement, and our award-winning parks and facilities. The city's commitment to a high quality of life will be on full display as we anticipate the grand opening this fall of the newly-renovated Margarita Recreation Center located at Mike Nigar Community Park. The center will include a new twenty-five-yard swimming pool, kitchen, classroom, dance studio, and multipurpose room. We look forward to welcoming everyone to our new intergenerational facility and providing programs, classes, and services for all ages and abilities. The new Welcome Center, located in the previous Visit Temecula Valley storefront, is a one-stop shop for all things community services. Residents can register for classes, purchase the city emergency preparedness backpacks, and learn about local businesses. Signature special events were even busier than ever this past fiscal year. We recently hosted Southern California's premier car show, the Temecula Rod Run, with over five-hundred classic cars on display and spectators coming from as far away as Paris, France. The holiday season also featured Santa's Electric Light Parade, the Christmas tree lighting at the Duck Pond, and the New Year's Eve grape drop. The community will soon be enjoying the Fourth of July Parade and Extravaganza, Art Fest Color Run, and the new Temecula History Day, as well as the recent Memorial Day Observance Concert featuring the Temecula Valley Symphony. On a daily basis, perhaps the biggest way that we impact the community's well-being is through our vast array of classes, activities, and programs. The Summer Fall Twenty-three Activities brochure, which features forty-eight pages of programming for the entire community, is packed with programs to keep our residents busy all summer long. Each year, we offer thousands of individual classes for every interest, including sports, performing, and visual arts, crafts and cooking, and our award-winning and nationally-recognized aquatics program, which promotes physical activity and water safety for individuals of all ages and abilities. The tiny Harveston Community Park Room has been extra-busy during this closure of the CRC for its renovation, and you will notice that the Harveston Park Room is included in the CIP for an expansion to accommodate our ever-growing Contract Class program. One of our most popular destinations is the library, the busiest in the Riverside County library system, and this guide highlights two full pages of library programs and activities to promote literacy, academic achievement, and social engagement. Now that summer's here, be sure to check out our award-winning aquatics program for the entire family. Whether you want to learn to swim, exercise, or just cool off and have fun, we have options for all ages and abilities. You can find out more at temeculascad.gov/aquatics. TCSD's cultural arts divisions foster a vibrant and engaged community through the visual and performing arts, historic preservation, cultural enrichment, and community outreach. Visitors to Old Town can learn about Temecula's rich history at the Temecula Valley Museum, enjoy an alfresco art exhibit at art nights, explore other cultures at our Culture Days program at Sam Hicks Monument Park, have fun with scientific discovery at Penny Pickles Children's Museum, and take in live performances at the Theater and the Merc. These many options provide a diversity of artistic expression and add color and texture to our community. To keep our community engaged, the Community Relations Team produces high-quality videos such as around and about Temecula and park adventures, and entertains our residents with their creative and engaging social media posts and reels. Coming up soon, the new Temecula Sunset Market has been created to bring a vibrant, family-friendly evening to Old Town reminiscent of night markets internationally. Beginning July twelfth, join us every second and fourth Wednesday of the month from five to nine PM for live entertainment, a gourmet food court, and some of the finest artisans and craft people selling their handcrafted treasures. Our sports division has once again had a busy year full of tournaments, league play, camps, and field rentals. As has become an annual tradition, all available weekend dates have been booked for tournaments at our two premier sports venues, Pat Bird's Salt Sports Park and our newest sports park, The Sports Ranch at Somers Bend. In total, forty-eight tournament weekends have been reserved for twenty twenty-three. We are also excited to announce new leagues for our adult population to participate in, such as the city's kickball and senior softball leagues, in addition to our existing offerings of adult softball and basketball. We are thrilled to once again be hosting the Fifteenth Annual College and Vocational Fair at the Promenade Mall, where students get an opportunity to speak with representatives from over three hundred California-based and out-of-state colleges, universities, vocational schools, and military institutions. The Human Services Team is busy preparing for the opening of the new Margarita Intergenerational Recreation Center and expanding the summer food service program and other programs for individuals of all abilities and ages. With the addition of CRP funds, the workforce development and human services teams are also working on expanding our successful intern and externship opportunities, including opportunities for young adults with special needs. The city's long-term commitment to mitigating the impacts of homelessness on individuals, businesses, and the community as a whole is known throughout the region as our very successful homeless outreach and prevention program. Through collaborations with partners such as Social Work Action Group, Community Mission of Hope, Riverside Sheriff Office, Project Touch, and other neighboring agencies, city staff and multiple departments have been able to create a framework of support and accountability, which has helped thirty-one individuals exit the streets so far this year, totaling an extraordinary two-hundred-and-two street exits since the renewal of the SWAG contract in January of twenty twenty-one. This year, the nationwide point-in-time count reflected a homeless population of thirty-five unsheltered individuals in Temecula, representing a net reduction of approximately fifty-nine percent in the chronically homeless population from its peak in two thousand and seventeen. For the next fiscal year, the TCSD budget reflects revenue totaling eighteen-point-eight million dollars. Program revenue, which includes the income from contract classes, registration fees, day camp, aquatics, and theater tickets, is projected to be two-point-six million dollars. Measure C, which is the seventy-four-dollar-and-forty-four-cent parcel tax dedicated to park programs and maintenance, is expected to be one-point-nine million, and the Measure S contribution of fourteen-point-three million provides the remaining revenue necessary to cover the operations to facilitate TCSD's wide-ranging services and programs. Operating expenditures of nineteen million are increasing by fourteen-point-six percent, primarily due to the opening of the Margarita Recreation Center and the labor adjustment, labor agreement adjustments. As shown in the TCSD five-year forecast, revenue and expenditure levels are anticipated to grow between three to six percent per year, as the district continues to enhance its services and programs offered to the public. I will now turn the presentation over to Director of Human Resources and Risk Management, Isaac Garabey, to summarize citywide staffing.
Thank you, Erica, and good evening. As part of the budget adoption in June, a separate resolution approving the schedule of authorized positions and salary schedule will be included in the operating budget agenda item. The salary schedule reflects the cost-of-living adjustments per the agreement with Teamsters' Local Nine-Eleven. Based salaries for executive, mid-management, confidential, represented, non-represented, and project employees will become effective the first pay period in fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four. Authorized positions for fiscal year twenty twenty-three twenty-four totals one-hundred-and-ninety-nine-point-two full-time equivalent positions, including the five council members and an authorized but unfunded position. A total of three-point-seven-five authorized positions are recommended to be added in fiscal year twenty-three twenty-four, which include the conversion of two existing positions from part-time to full-time, the addition of two new Maintenance Worker One positions, one for streets and the other for facilities, and a new management analyst position within the Information Technology Department. To complement the authorized staffing, the city also employs a significant number of part-time project positions in various seasonal and support positions. A total of seventy-point-three full-time equivalents make up our project staffing positions. Two additional positions are employed, which are limited in term and scope, to support the implementation of the city's new financial system. Staffing for the sheriff and fire departments are provided through the contracts with Riverside County and CAL-Fire. Sheriff staffing includes one-hundred-and-seventeen sworn deputies and eighteen community service officers, which exceeds the one sworn deputy per one-thousand-residents goal outlined in the city's general plan and QLMP. Fire staffing will also remain consistent with seventy-one fire personnel and will continue to provide four fire personnel, or four fire personnel per fire engine and ladder truck. This chart shows the city's authorized This chart shows the city's authorized staffing level since 2001. At the city's peak, a total of two hundred and ten point seven five positions were authorized. We remain eleven point five five positions below that peak with one hundred and ninety-nine point two total authorized positions. It's interesting to note that the that although general fund revenue has grown by seventy-eight percent since 2007, 2008, from sixty-three million to one hundred and twelve million, through the use of technology and increased efficiencies, the city's authorized headcount remains five point five percent below 2007, 2008. I will now turn the presentation over to Director of Public Works, Pat Thomas, to walk you through the capital improvement program budget.
Thank you, Isaac, and good evening, Mayor and council members. The Capital Improvement Program, or CIP, is a comprehensive five-year plan that addresses the capital needs of the city. Capital projects are those that cost over thirty thousand dollars, have a long-term lifespan, and are generally non-recurring. The fiscal years 2024 through 28, CIP is the largest in the city's history, with eight hundred and nineteen million dollars in total costs. The city has identified funding sources totaling six hundred and six million, or seventy-four percent of the total CIP. The remaining two hundred and thirteen million is unspecified at this time. However, before construction begins, on any of these projects, a funding source will be identified. Between the current year and next fiscal year, it's anticipated that CIP spending is programmed to exceed two hundred and ninety-two million dollars. The CIP includes a total of one hundred and four separate projects segregated by project category. This slide illustrates the significant efforts of the city to leverage outside sources of funding, which has yielded tremendous results in recent years. City funding contributes roughly thirty-six percent of the total CIP funding, with outside sources such as federal and state grants, Riverside County's Transportation Uniform Mitigation Fee, or TUMF, and Measure A, as well as other specific funding sources make up the remaining sixty-four percent of the total CIP funding. The CIP includes the addition of twelve new projects this year. The Bike Lane Upgrades Project is to add the green bike lane markings and other upgrades to bike lanes throughout the city. A Bridge Maintenance Project includes the maintenance of existing bridges throughout the city, which is based on the Caltrans Inspection Program. The I-15 Corridor Branding and Visioning Improvements is to begin the implementation of a long-term master plan for the I-15 corridor through the city. The Old Town Parkless Program is to add amenities in Old Town, which is funded through the Community Reinvestment Program, or CRP. The Pavement Management Program Update is to update our pavement management program, which includes the re-study and rerating of all of the condition of all the streets throughout the city and establishing new pavement condition index and new priorities for future pavement management projects. Pedestrian Ramp Upgrades is to upgrade those ramps throughout the city, and this is funded by the CDBG Program. We've added a project to construct a sidewalk on the north side of Third Street in Old Town. The Storm Drain Lighting Project is to maintain the existing storm drains we have throughout the city based on a storm drain master plan, which is currently being completed. We've added two new projects to fund the upgrading of our traffic signal systems throughout the city, and these projects are funded through the Highway Safety Improvement Program or Grant Program. The Uptown Temecula Affordable Housing Site is one which Luke will cover next in his update on affordable housing projects. And the Vacant Parcel Cleanup and Beautification Project is to beautify city-owned properties throughout the community, and again, this is funded through the CRP program. The Circulation Category includes twenty-three separate projects totaling five hundred and thirty-eight million dollars in project costs. The I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase Two, a project we've been waiting for a long time, is currently under construction and is scheduled for completion in early 2025. This project includes the fifty million dollar USDOT infra grant. The Pavement Rehabilitation Projects is the continuation of efforts to maintain the quality of the city's roadway system, one of our largest assets. We have over fourteen million dollars in pavement rehabilitation projects planned over the next two years, including repaving our arterial roads and residential slurry CO projects. The Myrieta Creek at Overland Drive Project is currently in the final environmental design phase, with construction anticipated to begin in 2024-25. This project is funded through the State of California Highway Bridge Program. The Rainbow Canyon Road Pavement Rehabilitation Project is currently being designed and planned for construction in fiscal year 2324, with the majority of funding provided through the Pachanga Intergovernmental Agreement, and this funding is included in over forty million dollars of funding that's been contributed by the Pachanga Tribe since 2000. The Diaz Road Expansion Project includes widening and improvement of Diaz Road between Rancho California Road and Winchester Road, followed by the final phase between Winchester and the northern city boundary. Diaz Road will be the northern extension of the western bypass. The I-15 Congestion Relief Auxiliary Lane Project includes the city-led project to construct an auxiliary lane for northbound I-15 between Temecula Parkway and Rancho California Road. This project is anticipated to start this fall, followed by the larger fifty million dollar Caltrans project to construct auxiliary lanes between the other interchanges on both the northbound and southbound sides of I-15 through Temecula, and that project is scheduled to begin in 2026. The Riverside County Transportation Commission is also planning to implement a smart freeway project to install detectors for the volume of traffic on I-15 and coordinate the ramp signals on all the ramps accessing the 15 freeway through Temecula. The Inez Road Phase One Project includes widening of Inez Road between Tierra Vista or the Duck Pond entrance and Rancho Vista Road, and this project includes funding from the Rancho Highlands Development Project. The Phase One Project will complete the widening of Inez Road in that section to that four-lane section that's designated in the general plan. As you've heard earlier today, we also have an Inez Road Phase Two Project called out in the general plan that would include improving Inez Road between Rancho Vista and La Paz. That project is currently unfunded, so we don't have any funds currently programmed for that project, and we're not planning to begin any work on that project for at least a few years, and that project will be studied in the general plan update that is being conducted over the next two years as well. There's a new roundabout proposed at the intersection of Deportola and Jaredias Smith Road, which will utilize eight hundred thousand dollars in federal grant funding from the Economic Development Initiative. The Infrastructure Category includes fifty-six separate projects totaling one hundred and thirty-four million dollars in total project costs. The Margarita Recreation Center, which you've heard about earlier, is the new intergenerational recreation center, which will also include a new pool complex. It's currently under construction and anticipated to be complete and opening in September of this year. The CRC renovation and expansion Phase One is currently underway and nearly complete now. That project includes the maintenance of numerous items throughout the CRC facility, followed by later phases, which will include expansion of the CRC facility. We're also planning to construct a new splash pad at the CRC Pool Complex, replacing the kiddie pool, and that project is anticipated to begin construction in the fall of this year. The City Facilities Rehabilitation Project includes items for repair and rehabilitation of existing city facilities based on the citywide facilities asset assessment study. The Citywide Sidewalk Project includes an annual replacement of damaged sidewalks and access ramps throughout the city, as well as new sidewalks and missing gaps from the citywide sidewalk inventory. The Bike Lane and Trail Program includes a project to install multi-use trails in and around the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. The Comprehensive General Plan Update is currently underway and will be worked on over the next few years. We have a project to improve add improvements to Fire Stations Eighty-four and Seventy-three in the interior of those facilities. Plans for Fire Station Eighty-four are complete and include a new fitness room, storage room, and kitchen improvements, and the plans for Fire Station Seventy-three will be completed in fiscal year 2324. Funding has been received from Pachanga to augment Measure S funding to enhance the landscaping on the west side of I-15 Temecula Parkway interchange, and we anticipate beginning construction on that project later this year. The Mary Phillips Senior Center renovation project is currently under construction and includes exterior and interior renovations and modernization. We installed a new emergency generator at the Mary Phillips Senior Center using funding from a Cal OES grant, and will be installing a lighted outdoor shuffleboard facility later this year as well. The Fiber Optic Master Plan and Fiber Optic Communications Project includes installation of fiber optic communications between traffic signals along the Winchester Road, Rancho California Road, and Temecula Parkway corridors, and coordination of these traffic signals to improve circulation and travel time. We are also establishing a master plan for fiber optic communications to all of our traffic signals and all of our other facilities throughout the city. The Parks and Recreation Category includes eighteen separate projects totaling over sixty-two million dollars in total project costs. The Flood Control Channel Reconstruction and Repairs Project includes a recently completed improvement at Friendship Park to prevent future erosion in the Temecula Creek channel, and the next phase includes the channel at the back of the Mike Nigar Park. The Uptown Temecula Sports Park includes funding to begin planning for the new multi-use sports park in the Myrieta Creek Detention Basin property owned by the Riverside County Flood Control District and part of the overall Myrieta Creek improvements. We expect this will be the cornerstone for future development in the Uptown Temecula District. Playground Equipment Enhancement is the continuation of annual program of themed playgrounds, including four parks this year and a Ronald Reagan Sports Park playground next year. The Harveston Community Park Building is slated for renovation and expansion of the classrooms and to bring the facility up to the current ADA standards. Park Improvements is the continuation of general park facility replacement throughout the city, and the Pickleball Courts Project is underway, includes the construction of a seventeen-court pickleball facility, replacing the soccer field at the pit in the Ronald Reagan Sports Park. City staff is meeting with stakeholders to receive input on conceptual plans and anticipate starting construction in 2024. The Roller Hockey Rink at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park will be upgraded with a cover and new rink surfacing. Staff will be meeting with representatives of user groups over the next few months and anticipates construction in early 2024. The existing skate park at the Ronald Reagan Sports Park will be reconstructed with a new modern skate park facility. Staff will be meeting with project stakeholders over the next few months to receive input on design concepts with plans for construction in later 2024. There's also a new dog park project at the Mike Nigar Park using Prop 68 grant funds to supplement Measure S funds. A new category has been included in the CIP this year, which provides for three projects that are funded with a combination of community facility district bonds and developer contributions. These include the Butterfield Stages Road Extension, which was completed between Myrieta Hot Springs Road and Rancho California Road. This project was funded with the community facilities district bond funds from the Somers Bend Project. The Nicholas Road Extension and Improvements includes starting construction between Caye Girisol and Butterfield Stages Road, just starting construction this year, and again, this project is funded with bond proceeds from the Somers Bend Development Project. We also have the Pachanga Parkway Environmental Mitigation Project, which was funded from the Wolf Creek Communities Facilities District. I now like to turn the presentation over to Deputy City Manager Luke Watson, who will discuss the city's affordable housing projects.
Thank you, Pat. The City of Temecula serves as the Housing Successor Agency to the Redevelopment Agency, or otherwise known as Housing Successor, and is responsible for the investment of twelve point eight million in housing bond proceeds of the former RDA. Utilizing this dedicated funding source, the city council has approved funding agreements for two developments, which will provide an additional one hundred and thirty-seven affordable units. First, the Los Haciendas Development, located in the uptown Temecula-specific plan area, will provide seventy-seven multifamily affordable units. The project is currently under construction, and the city is providing progress payments to the developer utilizing remaining housing bond proceeds. Second, the Vine Creek Development is located at the corner of Pujol and Main Street and will provide sixty affordable units, fourteen of which will be set aside for residents with special needs. After the city's four million dollar Community Reinvestment Program funding allocation towards this project, the developer was successful in acquiring tax credits, financing, and the project is now fully funded. Construction is expected to begin soon, and indeed, it did just last week. In addition, the CIP includes a new project partnering with Habitat for Humanity on a third Habitat-led affordable development that will include six for-sale owner-occupied townhomes available to low-income families and individuals. The council recently approved the funding agreement between the city and Habitat for Humanity, giving the city a relatively rare opportunity to add another affordable for-sale homeownership opportunity to the city's affordable housing inventory. Finally, the city recently utilized affordable housing bond funds to acquire a vacant site in the uptown Temecula-specific plan area. This site is now dedicated for the development of an affordable housing project. In addition to the property itself, the city council allocated one million dollars in Community Reinvestment Program funds, which are to be contributed directly to the project. Staff is currently preparing a Request for Proposals, RFP, which upon release will kick off a competitive process to select a development partner. While there are limited funding options available to cities for the construction of affordable and attainable housing, the city will continue to pursue every funding opportunity possible. Currently, the city is seeking corporate, nonprofit, and affordable housing development partners to come up with innovative ways to address the housing affordability needs of current and future residents. A number of conversations with potential development partners and community stakeholders are taking place. The city's twenty-plus-year effort to provide attainable housing options for all segments of the community has had past success with the funding and construction of seven hundred and fifty-six affordable and attainable units. And with the addition of Los Haciendas, Vine Creek, Habitat for Humanity Developments, and the future Uptown Temecula Project Site, the city will soon be able to offer approximately two hundred and forty-three additional affordable and attainable units to the community. I will now turn the presentation back over to the city manager to discuss future planning items.
Thank you, Luke. As you've heard this evening, the city has much to be proud of and has a substantial list of programs and projects underway. While the budget constraints mostly on the next fiscal year, we will also keep an eye on the future and strategically plan for impacts to future budgets as well. As you're aware, the fire station in Old Town is a state-owned facility and runs both a state crew as well as a city crew from this station. The state informed the city a few years ago that they intend to relocate this station to wine country and have, in fact, purchased a future site for the new station. The city intends to purchase the existing Fire Station Twelve site and has been working with state officials to navigate this process. Financially, we established the Fire Facility Acquisition Fund and began setting aside funding two years ago. By the end of 2026, we will have saved seven point five million to utilize for this acquisition. We do not, however, have funding set aside yet for the potential remodel of the facility or the backfill of staffing once the state crews move out of the station. I wanted to bring this up in tonight's discussion order to begin strategically planning for these long-term impacts. Recently, the Temecula Valley Unified School District submitted a proposal to the city requesting an additional two school resource deputies be added to the existing five SRDs currently under contract. The district and the city have a longstanding cost-sharing arrangement for the SRDs whereby the costs are split fifty-fifty. In my recent conversations with Dr. McClay, she's amenable and supportive of this staff request. Whether it's the addition of two, three, or six, I believe we do need to have the conversation about cost sharing. For context, it appears that there are twenty-two public schools within the Temecula city limits. That's excluding Tony Tobin Elementary, which is in Morgan Hill. The current five SRDs are dedicated to each of the high schools, while the others serve in a roving assignment amongst the other school sites. Each SRD costs about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand per school year for fiscal year 2324. At the May Budget Workshop, the city council directed me to schedule a joint city TVUSD subcommittee in the future for further conversations about school safety and the SRD program, which I will follow up. Since Measure S became effective in April 2017, we have accounted for its revenue and expenditures in a separate fund. From a technical accounting perspective, Measure S is a general fund revenue; is not required to be accounted for separately. Now that it has been six years since we
Now that it has been six years since we started receiving Measure S, staff would like to explore different reporting options to better align the city's budget with our financial statements, which report Measure S as a general fund revenue. Also at the May Budget Workshop, the City Council agreed that it would be worth our time to further discuss with the Strategic Fiscal Services Ad-Hoc Subcommittee the various alternatives for reporting and messaging Measure S while maintaining full transparency. I will be following up on this for later this summer. Any recommendations coming from this will be forwarded back to the full City Council. The city has contracted with a consultant to update our user fee study for all development-related fees that are imposed by the community development, public works, sheriff, and fire departments. The study is complete and has identified the full cost of providing the various services to the community and how those costs compare to our current fee schedule. This is a very complex study and has taken several years to complete, and Jennifer and I would like the opportunity to sit down and walk the Strategic Fiscal Ad-Hoc Subcommittee through the details of this report. Of course, any related recommendations will come back to the full City Council. As you've heard throughout this presentation, the city remains blessed with an excellent workforce and is financially stable over the ensuing five-year period, with reserves fully intact, structurally balanced with revenues exceeding expenditures, and a robust CIP program that is seventy-four percent funded. While our local economy is indicating a flattening out over the next several months, we have conservatively budgeted our revenues to reflect this trend. City staff will continue to monitor revenues, and we will bring the council an update if adjustments are deemed necessary. I want to give a special thanks to the entire executive staff, departmental budget analysts, and our finance budget team, including Director Hennessy, Finance Manager Paula Majors, and Senior Accounting Tech Catlin Dorsett, all of whom are foundational to our ability to build greatness while maintaining excellence in all that we do. And an extra special shout-out to our Media Services Team of Jonathan Hall and Chris Drier, who have taken our presentation to the next level with the addition of videos, drone footage, and top-notch graphics. Again, we did appreciate the feedback the City Council provided to us at the May Budget Workshop. This concludes our presentation this evening, Mr. Mayor. We strongly recommend approval of these balanced budgets and priorities, and we are available for any further questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. City Manager. Since we've already taken public comments, we can move into, I'll just go with, since we've already had a budget workshop, questions and comments together from my colleagues, and we can get moving on this. So would anyone like to go first?
Ladies first.
Councilmember Kalfis.
First, I just want to thank everyone who's still here. That was our second time listening, and I know it can be daunting, but there's a lot of information in there. And I just want to first just speak to the individuals from the Los Ranchitos neighborhood. I know Councilmember Alexander, that is her district, and she'll most likely hit on it as well. But I felt myself getting riled up for you, and I haven't been really riled up in many council meetings, so I felt myself getting almost angry, but I realized I was angry because I was passionate for you and the words that you said. People come to Temecula for neighborhoods such as Los Ranchitos, for neighborhoods like Meadowview, and for neighborhoods off of Nicholas Road. Those are the neighborhoods that make Temecula Temecula. We have our hikes, we have our bikes, but the equestrian community in Temecula is a major part of Temecula and one of the first things that was here. Just as I would never suggest making Meadowview a four-lane road on both sides, two on both sides, I would never suggest making Los Ranchitos a two-lane road on each side. So we'll be up here today, and we heard what you said, and I want you to know that the most likely case scenario tonight is that this will pass five to zero, but for the next three and a half years, you will have someone sitting in this seat that is not your council member in your district, but I'll be fighting for communities like yours and Meadowview and the other communities, for them to stay the communities that make Temecula Temecula. And one of the public speakers stated that I helped him learn to fight for his community. And I just want to say that that is the purpose of us up here. We want you to fight for your community. We want you to fight for what you believe in, and I am just happy that I learned to fight as young as I did. That's why I'm in this seat today. I will fight for the community for the next three and a half years. I will fight for you, and that's really what we're up here for. We're not up here to sit and listen to you and then vote a certain way that we came into here, thinking that we were going to vote. We're here to listen to you and listen to the community, and we have a Traffic and Safety Commission who does speed limits. And I believe an individual stated that we can't lower the speed limit in Los Ranchitos. And I want to say we absolutely can lower the speed limit. They suggested that we lower Pachanga Parkway to forty miles per hour, and that is a much bigger street than going through your neighborhood, so we can absolutely lower the miles per hour, especially a forty-five into a fifteen. And we have our Traffic Safety Commission, but the experts are you, are the ones that live in the neighborhood. You are the experts on, you're there day in and day out. You know what the traffic is like. So just know that you are heard by at least a few of us up here, and we will fight for you as long as we're in these seats. Other than that, I'm not sure of those individuals that watched the annual budget when we had it a couple of weeks ago, but I did propose, like our manager said, TVUSD asked us to cost-share two additional sheriff deputies, and I proposed that we almost introduce twenty-two new sheriff deputies to our school districts. And my thought process behind that was until we start defending the most vulnerable in our society and in our city, we have no foundation to build on. So I would like, and I proposed to the city manager, and I've spoken with our police chief, to have a school resource officer in every school in our school, public school here in our city. And I know that is a big ask, being over a hundred and, over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per officer, but I know that this is a city that can remain fiscally responsible and also protecting our defenseless. But lastly, just want to thank our city staff for making our job up here easy when it comes to the budget. They do a great job at budgeting, and I look forward to next year's annual budget meeting. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Alexander?
And that's why you went first. So anyways, I just want to say first off again, thank you, staff. You guys have done an amazing job having to do this several times between practicing, I know, and then actually delivering it twice. So thank you for all your hard work over, you know, the last year of everything you've put into this. You know, I am looking forward to the CIP budget or everything being completed, the projects, the bike lane, the bridge maintenance, the I-15 corridor, the Old Town projects. But again, as Councilmember Kalfis had stated, I am your council member who is supporting you guys, and I agree wholeheartedly with him that there are concerns, as I have had, been in and out of some of those driveways myself, and I do understand the concern about pulling out with a vehicle with children in that car. So I want to tell you, I do hear you on that. But at the same time, I do look forward to working with staff and the community at Los Ranchitos to be able to see how we can improve your lives. I can't imagine having to try to pull out of my driveway and be worried about getting hit by a car every day. I don't have to do that, because I live in a neighborhood that is, you know, a lot slower than that. So I just want to let everybody in Los Ranchitos know that I am here. If there are concerns, I've sat with the HOA president before and other people. I am here for you, and again, like Kalfis, I definitely do not support opening and accepting it to a four-lane just because of children, families, and animals. So thank you very much.
Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, quite simply, I just want to thank the staff for both presentations, the workshop and tonight, and it's exciting to be in a city that's in a position to be able to pay off debt within the next seven years. Not many cities throughout California are in a position to do that. So thank you, Aaron, for your leadership, and then also for all the department heads that presented tonight. Thank you. And ditto Councilmember Kalfis's comment, as well as Councilmember Alexander's regarding Los Chitos. That was Los Ranchitos. Those residents that spoke tonight, you did wake us up, and me being here six months, it's the first time I've heard of those concerns, and I think it's worthy, maybe the next council meeting, we get some type of data or stats regarding accidents on that stretch of freeway or road to see if there's something we can do now, although the budget proposes for something two or three years up from now. If there's something we can do now to help solve their issues, I think it's worthy of us looking into that.
All right. Mayor Bert Tim Stewart?
Yeah, I'm just going to echo everybody, because literally, I'm so impressed with our city and what we do and how we do it, and so I just want to thank all the department heads and our city manager for making it easy to be on City Council. I mean, this really is one of the easiest cities in the country, probably, to be a city councilman because of that, because of, we don't have those budget woes that a lot of cities do, and we do have a community that loves living here. And again, I echo the other three that went before me, Los Ranchitos is really a unique community, and that was put in the long-term CIP a long time ago, and maybe it's something that needs to be brought back and looked at. And I think once we get that second roundabout in, it's going to change the traffic flow quite a bit there. So I'm optimistic that I think we can help you guys as far as, you know, speeds and access to your properties, and so going forward, I think it's going to be good. So thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Bert Tim Stewart. Yeah, again, you know, this is the second formal presentation. We had one-on-ones, and we've been sort of knee-deep in this for a while, so we've seen this before. So I just want to thank staff, all the hard work going into this. I always felt like when I got elected, this was going to be like the hardest vote for me, and it's always been made the easiest. It's like it's the most important thing we do, and it's very straightforward, it's very simple, and we continue on a path of, you know, just wonderful fiscal health. I mean, there's really no other way to put it. And then just the amount of, you know, projects that we are building, you know, French Valley Parkway Phase Two, I think is going to have a huge impact on what's going on on our roadways, the roundabout that was mentioned. And then the community service projects that we have coming forward, right? Watching the, sort of that time lapse of the MRC was like, that's really cool to see that come out of the ground, another pool, you know, we're talking about skate parks and roller rinks and, you know, you name it, pickleball facilities, you know? So like, we're listening, we're doing, and it's just a quite wonderful city to be a part of. So I don't have anything else to add. We heard you clearly. This is something that I've heard before, talked to some folks with the HOA, HOA president over the years, and I do think that as we move through the general plan and we look at, you know, we're looking at the way vehicles travel now and the way we measure it as vehicle miles traveled, and it's a different calculus for how we build things, and we see that roundabout go in. I've always felt like, you know, driving through some of those neighborhoods and even Meadowview to the same extent, if they're like those jewels in San Diego County where I would shudder to see, you know, some freeway going through those neighborhoods as well. So I think we're on a good path, and especially as the project that was highlighted from Rancho Vista to essentially Tierra Vista or the Duck Pond, that widening there, I think is going to take a huge burden off for the rest of the system as well. So I think we're on a good path, and we can look at some of the things, traffic safety can look at them as well. With that, thanks for everyone, for all your hard work. It's truly appreciated, and I wish there were more than eight people here, because again, I think this is important, that people understand what actually goes on in our city. And so, hey, I encourage you to go to YouTube and watch it later in the week. I've already read the title for this item twenty-one, so at this moment, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
Motion approved. Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Brown, second by Councilmember Kalfis. Let us vote. All right, and that passes five-zero. Congratulations, everyone. All right, we'll move to item twenty-two, the business portion of our agenda, is Approve Amendment Number Six to City Manager Aaron Adams' Employment Agreement. May we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Under Section 4B of the City Manager's Employment Agreement, it provides that each year on July the first, he shall receive a salary increase in the amount of the cost-of-living adjustment not to exceed three percent or compaction adjustment necessary to keep his annual base salary at ten percent higher than the next step of the next highest-paid city employee. Tonight, the City Council approved an eight-point-seven percent cost-of-living increase for all city employees effective July one, two thousand twenty-three, as negotiated with Teamsters nine-eleven in the current memorandum of understanding. Since this amount is more than the three percent as provided in the City Manager's Employment Agreement and is also necessary to preserve the ten percent separation between the second-highest-paid employee and the city manager, it is recommended that you approve an amendment to his agreement, providing him with the eight-point-seven percent cost-of-living increase. We bring this to you as an amendment to his agreement based on the state law that says we have to be transparent in explaining the changes to the city manager's salary. And if you have any questions, I'll be pleased to respond to them.
Okay, understood. Before we maybe go to council questions or comments, Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we have one public comment, and the one and only speaker is Bob Cal.
Welcome.
Well, I appreciate what the city has done with the budget, and however, as I look at across the country and what every city has to do, it seems like a lot of money is spent and people still are hurting, and what are they hurting from, and what do they really care about? What they really care about is not really the park or a bike lane. They care about their cost of utilities, cost of the gas, and where traffic is, trying to go from one place to another without a lot of problems. I noticed that the, across the country, over my lifetime, I've seen the cost of the public servants going from being enough to live on to be so much money that it goes beyond a normal, what I would call a normal salary. When I looked at the salary that, I don't have anything against Aaron Adams, and I said this ten, twelve years ago, thirteen years ago, with Dudley and Marietta, he was making two-hundred-and-fifty-plus, two-hundred-and-fifty K-plus benefits. I don't have anything against him, I don't have anything against Aaron, I just have against something with the system that allows this to happen, that the bureaucracy is running the show rather than the people that are elected. I really thank Brennan for what he said, standing up. I say, thank you, Jessica, for what you said, standing up. We need to fight this bureaucratic system across the United States. It's not just you, it's not just Temecula, it's Marietta, it's every city that I see. When I saw in the patch that the city manager of Temecula was making three-hundred-and-thirty-five-thousand-plus benefits, I looked at TransparentCalifornia.com, and in two thousand twenty-one, Aaron Adams made two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars. So there's an eighty-three-thousand-dollar increase, if that is correct, and they take this information right from the California state. So that's an eighty-three-thousand-dollar increase. That's like, what, twenty percent? I mean, it's a lot of money from two thousand twenty-one to two thousand twenty-three. Altogether, he was making four-hundred-and-thirty-six-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars in two thousand twenty-one. That included benefits and other monies, other dollars. What I'm seeing is that right now, he's making a half a million dollars. When I talk to anybody on the street, not the city council, not the city staff, but when I talk to a person who, the normal average Joe on the street, I say, hey, you know, your city manager's making a half a million dollars. What? Nobody can believe that. Nobody can understand why. Nobody can understand why, because they're not making that kind of money. They can't figure out why a city manager makes that kind of money. Now, you can explain to me and say, yeah, well, we have to pay, you know, a competitive salary because, you know, it's a system where one is competing with another city, but we're not, we're not, we're not, we're a business, we're not a business. I mean, you might say it's a business, but we're, this is the public, this is the, we're public, you're public servants. In the eye of the people, it looks really, really bad to make a half a million dollars for a salary for a city manager. Having said that, just in the last statements I'll make are, in the eye of equity, if you are making a half a million dollars, if you want equity, give half your money to the people. Donate it to good nonprofit organizations. And I'd ask all of the members of the staff that are making over $150,000 to do that. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, Madam City Clerk, are there any more comments?
Nope, that's the only comment.
Okay, I'll open it up at this time to questions or comments from my colleagues. Would anyone like to ask anything? If not, I'll entertain a motion and a second.
A motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Brown, second from Mayor Pro Tim Stewart. Let us vote. Okay, and that is approved 5-0. We'll move on to items for future city council agendas. Do any of my colleagues have an item for future city council agendas?
I just wanted to follow up with Aaron, just if the Los Ranchitos data that I requested earlier has already been presented in previous council meetings, maybe refresh that. I don't want you doing extra work, but I just think it's worthy of discussion at the next council meeting if there's something that exists out there.
Certainly. I was going to recommend, and the mayor kind of touched on this, that I think, just so the folks in Los Ranchitos know they've been heard, the more prudent, expeditious pathway here would probably be to agendize it actually on the agenda for the Traffic Safety Commission sooner than later, and I know that commission's prepared to listen and to brainstorm and listen to safety concerns and/or traffic calming solutions that may need to be considered between now and when we finish the general plan circulation element. So, that would be my recommended course of action, Pat, if you agree, and maybe some of that data can come back as Councilmember Brown requested, and we can keep the city council in the full loop.
Does it have to be tied to the general plan, or is this something that could be?
No, that can be done independently, so we can definitely provide that data, get some input from the commission, and if there's something that comes forward, we'll bring that to the council.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have anything for future agendas? Okay, and I'm going to apologize to our city manager. I moved on very quickly to items for future agenda. I just wanted to say that you have our full confidence in the work that you do, over a $100 million budget. I don't think folks realize what your job truly entails, so we appreciate you, and you're doing a great job, so thank you.
And I think the city manager's salary is actually on the city's website, correct? It's not TransparentCalifornia, to be more accurate, correct?
City managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item. I know this is important to the city council, I know it's also important to the community. We have a firm date, and I wanted to put it out there to everyone, July 12, 2023, right around the corner. We will be hosting here in the conference center a community meeting. However, this is Temecula Valley Hospital's meeting, not the city, but we will be hosting it. We're encouraging everyone that's interested in learning more about their proposed behavioral health hospital to come, listen to this presentation, bring your concerns, ask your questions. Again, July 12, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. here in the conference center. So, more to come on that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. City attorney's report.
Yes, we had a closed session tonight. There was no reportable action under the Brown Act, although the council did provide direction to the staff with respect to those real estate acquisitions.
Okay, thank you very much. All right, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to our next regularly scheduled meeting to be held on Tuesday, June 27 at 4:30 p.m. Adjourned.